Call the roll, please.
Al Landville.
Here.
JR Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Melissa Niles.
Here.
Travis Orbach.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Linda Barbell.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remember, counsel, if you have a conflict of interest, please let the rest of the council know before you vote on that particular item. I need a motion to approve an amended agenda for tonight, and it will be to remove the public hearing and add a new business item G, a travel training request for Mary Torones, Heather Lee, Nicole Clark, and Laura Blue to attend the Black Hills Libraries Mini Conference in Rapid City on April 22, 2024, and Misty gave you a description of that particular training session.
I make a motion to approve an amended agenda to remove public hearing from the agenda and add new business item G, travel training request for Mary Torones, Heather Lee, Nicole Clark, and Laura Blue to attend the Black Hills Libraries Mini Conference in Rapid City, April 22, 2024.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the April 2nd council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 2nd council meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
I make a motion to approve the bills in between for $212,332.76.
Second.
Did you get that, Misty?
Yes, thank you.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the current claims?
Make a motion to approve current claims for $689,819.87.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to address the council? So, I'm going to take, I'll give us your name and address.
Amber Holz, and I live at 11824 Indian Canyon Road in Hot Springs, South Dakota.
And then we'd like to keep it to five minutes?
Yes, sir, I will easily do that. I just wanted to come and introduce myself, I'm running for District 30 State Senate. I know most of you already from being from here in Hot Springs, a lot of familiar faces for those of you in the audience, but I just wanted to, you know, say that I'm running and, you know, show that I'm here. One of the reasons why I'm running is it's, I think, really important for your state representatives to have good communications with the people involved in the local governments, and I think that in the past there's been some issues with there being a lack of communication between the two, and so if elected, I would hope that you would always feel that you could pick up the phone and give me a call based off of bills or problems that you're having in this local area. So if you don't know me already, I'm Amber, nice to meet you, but I'm from the area here. My mom worked at the VA Hospital for 10 years, my dad's a disabled veteran, I got involved in politics because of the Save the VA crisis and, you know, wanted to come home after I graduated from law school and get involved so that our community does have a voice at the state level, but also when we have issues involving the federal government, even at the city level here in Hot Springs. So just wanted to introduce myself, if you didn't know me already, that's good to see you guys, and good luck with your meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Onto council updates. Our first update is from the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, Olivia.
That's a bit better, I think. Can you hear? Was it off?
It's on. We can hear you.
Right up against it.
Okay, I'm used to eating the microphone. So, yeah, good evening, Mayor Nelson, city council, city personnel, and community members. Thank you for inviting me to give the Hot Springs Chambers' report. This will be very short because not much has happened since the last report. We had a very nice chamber annual meeting in March, very successful, very enjoyable, and anyone was there got a very long report. So just to recap a few things, we have all our advertising in place for the season, and the last thing that's going to fall into place is the television advertising that we do with KEV and KOTA, and that's a co-op where the chamber does the buy-in with a substantial amount, which allows 15 businesses approximately to participate, and three businesses share a 60-second slot, not the same business, it'll be something like an attraction, dining and shopping. They pay 100 bucks, and it runs throughout summer on those two or one television stations, and each spot for the individual business is 20 seconds. So without something like the buy-in and the co-op, we wouldn't be able to get television advertising, so that's quite exciting. We've been doing that a few years now. Also, coming up to help local businesses with personnel recruitment and to try and help them fill their full-time and part-time positions, the chamber's hosting the Southern Hills Job Fair again, which takes place on Friday, this Friday, April 19. It is being advertised locally in the newspapers and radio and on Facebook, and we did hold it, we are holding it on a Friday in the hope that the younger crowd will come, as there isn't any school on Friday. Also, just got approval from our Board of Directors to go ahead with a Superior Service Program, and what that is, as we move towards the visitor season, I wanted to try and find some way for us to encourage a really good service in Hot Springs, and so came up with a Superior Service Program, which will recognize individuals who go above and beyond and give great service to their customers. So if somebody reports to us that they had Superior Service at a local business, they wish to put somebody forward for the reward, they would have to give us details of who the person was, when the service occurred, and why they feel that that service was superior. And then the chamber will then visit that business and award that individual with $10 in chamber bucks and a certificate, and we hope that this will also encourage others to get a little excited and also want a free 10 bucks. Well, you're going to earn it. And at the end of the year, hopefully, a person gets recognized more than once, and the person with the most rewards will get a larger prize, possibly a plaque or some more chamber bucks or something. And we're going to roll this out and see how it happens. We want it to be legitimate, it's not just, oh, hey, tell them I did nice and then I'll get 10 bucks. It's got to actually mean something and be a legitimate program, so we'll start rolling that out soon. We're also planning to go ahead with opening the depot on the Memorial Day weekend. Even though there might be roadworks, people may still need assistance on how to navigate around, and we'll reassess the situation if visitor numbers are too low. But, you know, it's tough to predict what's exactly going to be happening at that time, so the easiest way is to go ahead as planned and adjust on the fly. The next event coming up for us is the Wine Walk, which takes place Friday of Memorial Day weekend. We will be applying for the usual wine licenses, and we also hope to rent a shuttle to ferry the people to and fro. We are going to have some parking spaces outside of the downtown and then ask the shuttle to ferry people from the parking lots to the finishing and starting points, which will be the same, the depot on the north and the florist on the south. So we're going to help people get to the event by having a shuttle so that they don't have to all try crowd into the downtown and park. After that, we'll work on 4th of July celebrations. We will be hosting the community picnic and the fire quack-a-duck race, and then, of course, we are working on the balloon festival, because even though that's in August, we have a lot of things to put in place. We don't have that many sponsors yet, we hope more will come in, and at this stage, we anticipate 20 to 25 balloons based on higher costs and lower sponsorships, but that can change as finances change. Then towards the end of summer, we'll have the grant money from South Dakota Tourism, that'll give us more television advertising in the shoulder season, which will then bump up against our November-December big promotions that we do every year. So I think we're looking forward to a very good year, and we will hope, and as new and fun things happen, we'll keep you apprised. So thank you for your time.
Counsel?
Olivia, since you brought that up, because there wasn't much of an advertisement last year, Prairie Transit will be providing your shuttle service possibly. We have three drivers, so one of us will be providing that service.
Excellent. Thank you, Larry.
Yes.
Anyone else? On the depot, Olivia, you'd mentioned opening it on Memorial Day?
Memorial Day, a couple of days before Memorial Day weekend, but historically speaking, May has now moved a little later. We don't see much traffic in May, we see more in October, where before people were coming in at the beginning of May. So to open it at the beginning of May, it doesn't, you know, we don't really see that much traffic. So the week of Memorial Day weekend, they go in, they clean up, they make sure everything's spruced and fresh, and then the Thursday or Friday, they're open for business.
And what days and hours are you looking at?
Probably the same as we did last year, which Monday's always a maybe or maybe not. We kind of either start with it and keep it, or start with it and stop it, depending on traffic. So we're looking probably Monday to Saturdays, 10 to 5, or Tuesdays to Sundays, 10 to 5. We have to adjust, but it's not seven days a week, it's six days a week.
All right.
Our Energize Conference is the two days before the Wine Walk.
Yes.
And maybe it would be nice to have that open for that event, too, because people would like to maybe go in and look at the building itself.
Yeah, that's doable, yeah, totally. I'll talk to Frank and them and say, hey, two days early, clean a day early. That's a good idea, Deb, thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you, Olivia.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So our next update is from the Hot Springs Public Library Director, Mary. Quarterly update and annual report.
Very good. It's been a little slower just because it was winter, and we're starting to gear up for our summer reading program, so it will pick up a lot. We've seen quite a few out-of-towners and new people moving into town, coming into the library and using it quite a bit, some of them stay there almost all day, so it's nice to see people enjoying our library. Statistics-wise, we currently have about 3,700 people that have active cards, they're actively coming in, they're getting stuff, they're using Libby if they wanted to do the electronics. 2,186 of those are strictly Hot Springs, while 1,263 are just the local Fall River County, and everybody else is a little further out. We're averaging about 50 new cards or renewals every month, so that's nice that they keep coming in and keep updating. Our patron count, what we count for the day when they're coming in and out the doors, we're averaging 2,000 people a month, so it's a nice steady income there, coming in. We currently have 25,979 titles in our collection, we are working on adding to that this year. We've got quite a few requests that we're refilling, and new kids books and some nonfiction books, which has been neglected for a while, so we're getting those updated. As I mentioned, Heather's getting her summer reading program up and running, she's planning on June through July, and she'll have four different classes for the different age groups, all the way up, one-year-old, all the way up to 18-year-olds, so hopefully we'll get lots of kids involved in that, she did a great job last year with it. And then the state report, if there's any questions that anybody has on the state report.
Counsel? I have nothing.
She's still prepared for questions, because she's asking many questions.
She's covering everyone just fine. So I want to make sure I'm asking my questions at the right point. When you say the state report, that's the 2023 annual report? Okay. So you and I chatted a little bit earlier today. On page one, under the building remodeling of the library, have the entire roof was replaced, I just need to get that to, the shingles were replaced, not the entire roof itself?
Yeah, just the shingles, yes.
Yeah, that's, where's my next JLO highlight? Oh, we talked a little bit about the total live programs on page six. Could you go into those again for me?
The total live programs that we had were all of summer's, summer reading and fall reading programs that we had for all the kids, and then we had two different book clubs, so we counted all those in for the stats for that. So we had 49 programs with 418 participants.
And then on page 10, the question I highlighted is, would the library like to schedule a visit from the South Dakota State Library staff in 2024? You have no, but I thought your explanation was good and thought it should be shared, so if you could go over that again?
Yeah, the explanation for that was that, I took the question is, if we had issues or anything, we could get the state library to come in and help us with them, and since we are actually doing really well, we've worked really well, I didn't think we needed to actually schedule a program or schedule a visit per se from the state librarians. They do come out in this area throughout the year, and they do stop in at the different libraries, so we will probably get a visit from them, which we will gladly welcome, but we didn't need to schedule one because we didn't have any problems.
That's all I had for you. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
What about the one right above it, says, has the library had any challenges to materials in the reporting year?
We have been extremely lucky that nobody has actually challenged any of our materials. We've had nobody complain about anything we have. More, we want more of this stuff, but no complaints about what we actually have.
And you have plenty of books back there to read, right? There's stacks of them.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Congratulations on everything, Mary.
Good job. Onto personnel, can I get a motion to approve Personnel Action A?
I'll make a motion to approve Personnel Action A. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto our only ordinance for tonight. Ordinance item A, second reading of Ordinance 1257. Can I get a motion for that one, please?
Make a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1257 to revise Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 72, Way Finding, 72.01, Definitions.
Second. Discussion? If you remember, this was the one where we added definitions to the ordinance that we had missed the first time. Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Al Landville.
Yes.
Travis Orbach.
Yes.
Linda Barbell.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Melissa Niles.
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Onto new business, new business item A, can I get a motion to approve and accept the 2023 Annual Survey of the South Dakota Public Library?
I make a motion to approve, accept the 2023 Annual Survey of the South Dakota Public Library as presented by the library director and approved by library board.
Second.
We'll take Lukens. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item B, can I get a motion to renew Option Year Four, the City School Facility Use Agreement?
I make a motion to renew Option Year Four, the City School Facility Use Agreement effective May 1, 2024. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item C, can I get a motion to set a special meeting on Thursday, May 2, beginning at 3:00 PM at the library?
I'll make a motion to set a special meeting on Thursday, May 2, beginning at 3:00 PM at the library to review the Emergency Communication Center training.
Second. Discussion?
I think this is, this is on here because I think Misty's keeping us proper with the open meeting laws. It's about time, there's several of the folks on the council that have not had training or been familiar with what we have up at the library with our Emergency Communication Center. So I talked to Misty about putting out a notice of quorum, but since potentially all or at least a quorum of us will be in place, that's actually meets the definition of a special meeting. So we will have a special meeting at 3:00 PM. The two agenda items that we will have will be, one is, we will not pay ourselves for that meeting, and the second agenda item will be to, will be the training for the operation of the Emergency Communication Center.
For those that work, how long do you anticipate the meeting run?
About one hour. Unless everyone is just so excited and the questions flow, it may go longer.
Thank you.
An hour.
Is this a county event, county thing or a city?
City.
So what you're saying is that this is just for us, it's not for the general public?
It is a public meeting.
But it's a public meeting.
The public would be open to it, and other members that show up at the public safety meeting, the emergency, county emergency manager, assistant emergency manager will likely stay on for the training also, but for us, it will be a special meeting.
So it's a nice way of saying, if anybody from public would like to come to this, you're more than welcome to be invited.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill.
So the room that we'll be meeting in is up at the library. Bill has gotten an awful lot of work to work with the library folks and set that particular room up, he has a lot of resources, materials available in the room in the case of some emergency that City of Hot Springs or Fall River County, the state needs to deal with. So this is a good opportunity to learn about that process and learn what the city's role would be in that, what the finance officer's role would be in it, the chair of the Safety Committee, and what our individual responses, responsibilities would be for that. Encourage everyone to make it. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item D, can I get a motion for an automatic budget supplement of $3,179.22 to the water fund?
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $3,179.22 to the water fund, vehicle repairs, 602-4335042510 for hail damage repair of the 2020 Chevrolet 3500, VIN number 1402, caused by the 71823, excuse me, hailstorm, revenue received from SDPAA, supplemental claim number GC2023115935.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item E, can I get a motion to approve a travel training request for Police Department Captain Philip Shively?
I make a motion to approve travel, travel training request for Police Department Captain Philip Shively to attend the Active Attack Integrated Response Course to be held in Sturgis, South Dakota on 4/28 through 5/3.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item F, can I get a motion to approve a travel training request for Officer Matthew Maxfield?
Make a motion to approve travel training request for Officer Matthew Maxfield to attend the Criminal Interdiction to be held in Rapid City, South Dakota on 5/21 through 5/23.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And our last new business item, the one we amended to add, new business item G, can I get a motion to approve a travel training request for Mary Torones, Heather Lee, Nicole Clark, and Laura Blue?
I make--
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the travel training request for Mary Torones, Heather Lee, Nicole Clark, and Lauren Blue to attend the Black Hills Library Mini Conference in Rapid City, South Dakota, on April 22, 2024.
Second.
Good job. Discussion?
Is this a weekend, or did we already clarify it?
One day.
It's one day? Okay. I'm good.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto our committee reports, first one, administrative and finance. JR, Melissa?
Admin Finance met on April 8 at 1:00 PM here in the Mueller Civic Center. Present were Misty Summers-Walton, Deb Johnston, Al Landville, Bill Lukens, and JR Huddleston. Old business number one, additional costs related, excuse me, to water and wastewater replacement, suspended sidewalk and other road-related project costs, ongoing review and discussions. Seven change orders to date for the water wastewater project construction contract currently at, excuse me, $2,372,846.39. Want me to do that again? Payments to date total $1,543,543,623.26. Man, I'm going to get this right yet. With $58,000 remaining in the CDBG grant funding. Suspended sidewalk, no payments made to contractor since October 2023, with new progress. We're expecting very large invoices to begin, coming in construction contract currently Payments to date total $1,755,611.89. Item Two, update city job description, update desired minimum qualifications, and add other desired qualification, remove SDDLIC requirements, update SHGC work hours and days, description update director number of hours, title of development coordinator, golf operations manager, description updates, no update was available. Discuss CDL training and repayments, number three, discuss CDL training and repayments, still discussing Class A as it is necessary, if it is necessary, and if so, what would be the terms of repayment? Council approved training repayment for Class-- Council approved training repayment for Class B. We anticipate at least two training requests to come before the council for approval soon. Item four, Fall River County dispatch agreement 2025 and beyond. Committee recommends proposing a 2% to 3% increase each year for the next three to five years. Discuss what Hot Springs taxpayers get as far as services from the county for property tax dollars collected and retained by the county. New business, mayor items, mayor not present. Item two, city admin, city administrator was not present. Item three, committee member items. Councilman Lukens requested a special meeting of council and other interested parties to review, review the emergency communication center training at the library on 4/24, 3:00 PM. Finance officer brought up the airport courtesy car discussion from the last council meeting and reviewed financial information regarding cars. This will be discussed again at the next admin finance meeting after meeting with the state administrator, airport manager, finance officer, and the mayor. Excuse me, item four, review monthly finance officer reports. Auditors are here, there are three of them. The audit report will be done and presented by either the first or second meeting in June. Misty was selected as the vice chair of the SDML District 9. Congratulations, Misty. To date, roughly $600,000 remains in 501 Fund, suspended sidewalk expenses, $758,000 in water fund, and $1 million in the water wastewater, in the wastewater fund. Healthcare premiums will see a 14.7% increase for the next year. Item five, Alderman Lukens, discuss the 2025 projects. Bill presented a spreadsheet he has created and discussed the 2024, 2025 projects. Committee agrees with prioritizing the flood, safety railing, and modifications needed at the Evans Pumping Station. Item six, review repayment of expenses, training slash certification, and clothing slash equipment. Document PD chief request table to the next meeting. Number seven, July 2024 Ward 4 opening. In July, we will have an opening for aldermen or older women for Ward 4. Recommending request, requesting letters of interest to be submitted prior to July 1. Council meeting for review and plan to appoint to fill until next election at that meeting. Number eight, wayfinding update, awaiting report from the ISG. Number nine, surplus auction planning. School and county are interested in joining us for this auction. Will contact Berdine, who has facilitated previous auctions for the city. No date set yet. Item 10, Southern Hills Golf Course concession air at the Pro Shop. Committee is not recommending concession air at the Pro Shop. Committee feels we need to support our local establishments first and foremost. Meeting adjourned to 2:47 PM. Excuse me, next meeting is May 13th at the Mueller Civic Center, 1:00 PM. Subject to your questions.
Melissa, is there anything you'd like to add?
I was not present.
So that'd be a no? Okay. Thank you. Any questions for JR? Thank you. Airport advisory, Bill?
Okay, airport advisory met Thursday, April 4th at 8:30 AM at the airport. Members present were Shane Miller, Gary Tellkamp, Mark Boxbaum, and Petra Wilson. Employees present were Ivan Venner, city administrator Bob Nelson Jr., public works engineer Tracy Bastian, and also KLJ engineer Charlie Baker. Elected officials present were myself, airport tenants, Anthony Pritzkow with South Dakota Wildland Fire, and Southern Hills Aviation employee Glenn Cheatham. No members of the public were present. We adopted the agenda. Regarding airport update for the T-hangers, the building is complete. The entry sets have not been changed out. Cleaning and site grading is yet to be completed, and there's some paperwork yet to be filed. Regarding the taxi lane project update, the bid opening was, at the time of this meeting, was scheduled for Thursday, April 11th. That bid opening did take place. Monthly fuel sales, in March, we sold 622 gallons of aviation fuel. The average fuel price in 100-mile radius is $6.03. The wholesale fuel price as of April 4th was $4.80, which is up 50 cents in the past few weeks. Our current price is $6.20. Based on average retail prices and wholesale costs, the committee recommends no adjustment based on potential futures. In March, we had an estimated 40 fixed wing flight operations. We had three balloon launches, zero landings. As of March, the airport had expended 19.36% of their budget, 325% of the year. South Dakota Wildland Fire has completed all of their upgrades in the area that were renting to them. Going forward this year, they plan on keeping two of the single-engine air tankers here at Hot Springs Airport. And on April 26th, the National Guard helicopters will be conducting airdrop training operations from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM.
What date was that? I'm sorry.
That was April 26th, which I think is a Saturday.
Thank you.
There were no observations for, opportunities for improvement. Under old business, the AWAS III project proposal document continues to be updated in preparation for the 2025 budget hearings. Under new business, the committee was provided with copies of the grazing agreements to begin review as those five-year agreements will expire at the end of this year. The meeting adjourned at 10:10 AM, and our next meeting will be Thursday, May 2nd, 8:30 AM at the airport.
Any questions for Bill?
The bid openings will be on a future council agenda when the engineers done reviewing them?
Yes.
Award?
The information, I believe, the committee will review it at the May 2nd meeting, and a recommendation will be on the next council meeting. And it was very good news.
Bill, I know we joke about it in here, but maybe some of the general public doesn't understand. When you get three balloons leaving, that means that they don't come back to the central point and land. They're landing somewhere else out there.
Yeah, very rarely do wind conditions exist to where a balloon will land in the same place it took off.
Because I've had some questions and it was like, I don't know.
Where do all these balloons go?
If you follow any of the ballooners on Facebook, you'll notice that a lot of them are chase vehicles. And just, since you got me off on this rabbit trail, you're going to have to pay for it now. The balloon community is very courteous with the landowners. They actually have apps so they know what private property they're allowed to land on and what private property they need to avoid even from a, if they can, from a flyover standpoint, but especially from a landing standpoint. So they're, unless it's an absolute emergency, they're not going to drop in on somebody's property that, that farmer or rancher doesn't want. So they're a very thoughtful and courteous group, so. But yeah, there'll be chase vehicles that watch where they're going and go downwind and find them.
Thank you, Bill.
Any other questions? Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional?
I'm sorry, did you have something, Deb?
It's okay. I was just going to ask, you know, how about the planes? Don't some of them come back?
Well, actually, we have quite a lot of transient traffic. We actually base our estimated flight operations on the number of fuel sales, and then we just up it by 25%. So it's, some of it's local pilots, some of it's transient pilots that are just stopping by to fuel up, possibly on a cross-country trip. Typically, they, typically, they like our fuel prices, they like our altitude, they like our weather.
All right, anyone else? Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Travis?
The Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District Board will next meet Thursday, May 9th, 7 o'clock PM at the South Annex Building.
Thank you. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
Historic Preservation met April 3rd. And present were Pat Like, Brian Crawford, Christine Heidebrink, Carl Hall, Scott Sogi, myself. Guests were Andrea Powers and Vicky Moore. Under new business, Historic Property Owners Guide, the design guide, and Historic Property Owners Guide have not yet been renewed by Carl, reviewed by Carl and Christine. Deborah also provided a copy of the information regarding grants, preservation funds, and tax incentives to be viewed, be reviewed and/or included as well. Number two, Deadwood Grant Funds Opportunity for the City of Hot Springs. There was discussion regarding the Deadwood Grant Funds and whether or not we wanted to continue pressing for legislative change, changes to the fund program. A request was made to see if we could obtain the original legislative bill for the funding. Also, the possibility of approaching Deadwood directly, first with the request to change the fund distribution. Several other options were discussed, including rotating funds across the state and a traveling lottery. Andrea also noted that News Watch will be doing a piece covering primary problems in towns and cities across the state, and will be including Hot Springs. We need to be considering what issues we would like them to present. Under old business, under certified local government grant project options, project ideas were discussed with the foremost being a revised historic preservation packet to provide to owners and potential buyers of the historic buildings. Carl and Christine will be working on reviewing information for such a packet. Pat stressed the importance of keeping accurate in-kind forms for funds to be applied towards different projects. Number two, the Seven Sisters Mountain Range designation as a point of interest. The committee was approached regarding making the Seven Sister Mountain Range a designated point of interest. Deborah was unable to obtain much information to date on how the range acquired its name, but will continue searching. Our city administrator is also doing searches on that as well. Number three, Springs Lodge and Cafe additional storage structures. There have been no communications or updates as of the date of that meeting. Number four, River Channel retaining barrier wall. Deborah reached out to American Metal, this is a while back, but has not gotten any information back yet. The item is still pending, and our city administrator is actively involved with reusing the metal retaining wall barrier that's being removed during the suspended sidewalk construction. So we want to reutilize that portion of the railing to go in front of the springs in by the river to elevate that retaining wall since it's so low. So that's still pending. Deterioration by neglect update, no update was available on the status of the deterioration by neglect action taken against the owners of the properties located at 243 North River Street, 611 North River Street, and no contact has been made yet regarding the structure at 143 South Chicago. I presented photos of an old, of old hidden tunnels under the River Street sidewalk that were exposed during the construction. There was one basement that extended out underneath the sidewalk at the theater, and there was like a very small 12-by-14-inch rock tunnel from the area between the Heron Gallery and the VFW building. That's the only points of interest that have come out of that, that could have had any historic interest. The meeting adjourned at 6:20 PM. The next one will be Wednesday, May 1st at 5:00 PM at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Deborah?
I do. Deborah, you said something about News Watch could be coming in and may do an article on us or something on, any idea when they're coming?
No, I don't. Andrea didn't say.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I will get in touch with her and find that out.
Anyone else?
Did we preserve the findings, the basement and the room?
They took pictures and they ended up, they essentially walled off at the owner's property line. Like made a solid foundation and closed those areas off. It was just a very small, it wasn't even in a straight line. It was like a triangular piece that came out about two, three feet. I haven't seen any information. I've, I've heard that there was vaults underneath, the areas down like by morning sunshine area, but I haven't heard of any of that information.
Would there have been outside access to perhaps coal shoots?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
I haven't gotten any of that information.
I have one question. I'm getting the impression that Historic Preservation Committee is spearheading this project for the Seven Sisters Point of Interest. It was the reason why Seven Sisters Historic Preservation Committee was asked to help in finding this information out. That's the only thing that, that committee was asked to do.
We're not spearheading it, no.
Okay, well, the way you worded it kind of sounded like that.
No, we're just looking for information.
Okay. Just want to clarify that.
Clarified.
Anyone else? Thank you, Deborah.
Yep.
Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met April 11th, 2024 at noon at the Evans Plunge. Present were myself, Chris Hansen, Gabby Martin, Barry McNair. Number one, we had an update on equipment. They have found and purchased a 10-ton heat pump for $35,000, which includes installation but not removal of the current pump. Estimated arrival is 12 weeks out. Steam room is down, and they have ordered a new control system for $3,000 to be installed sometime this week. Number two, the closure review. The annual closure for cleaning went well with lots of maintenance, cleaning, painting, and power washing going on. A new soda, a new soda fountain was installed in the lobby area as well as new shower curtains in the dressing rooms. Review, number three, review of monthly incidents. We have a frequent patron with medical issues that tends to overuse the hot tubs and having to be fished out numerous times or reminded of his time limit. This person has been informed of the limited time usage posted, but has decided to ignore the signage posted. Committee believes we need, we may need to seek legal advice, guidance on how to proceed with this issue to avoid medical issues and still provide a safe environment for all users. Four, two, two new guards are starting this week with a third showing interest. Per Gabby, she will be doing WSI certification training for two new girls coming soon. Swim lessons will be starting the end of May. Number five, the next meeting will be May 9th, 2024, noon at the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs, adjourned at 12:41.
Any questions for Linda? So I have a couple. The heat pump, the new one includes installation but not removal?
But not removal of the current But not removal of the current pump.
Okay, so.
That's what she was saying.
What's the plan for the removal of it? Is that going to be done with plunge staff or?
She did not divulge that.
All right.
I can follow up and find out.
Okay.
Okay. And then you'd mentioned seeking some legal advice about the individual who's exceeding the posted times in the hot tubs?
Yeah. She, she didn't know how to go about that because there's, there's probably HIPAA issues involved with that as well.
You're up.
You know, other than just having her lifeguards frequently go past and check and make sure the person is okay in there.
Which they do anyway.
Yeah.
They do 15-minute checks of the steam room and the health club. Anyway, I would imagine if they're violating the terms, they could be asked to leave and their membership canceled. We do have guidelines, I'm not sure what they're called, but.
I don't know if this is a daily occurrence or if it's just frequent, you know.
We've had memberships canceled for other violations of the rules down there. I think that would be the first conversation for Chris to have with the offending party is make them aware that their membership can be revoked.
Right. Okay.
See where that goes.
All right.
Anyone else? Thank you. Parks Recreation, Larry, Linda?
Parks and Rec Meeting met Wednesday, April 3rd at 2 o'clock here at the Mueller Civic Center. The public that were present were Jason Gesh, Jason Midgley, Caitlin Mossitt, Shelley Higgin Brown. Staff present were Chris Catkey, Lori Sherard, Gabby Martin, and Bart Sieg. City Council was myself, Linda, and Deborah, and Robert Nelson Jr. The agenda, the agenda was accepted as is. Cemetery is updated by Lori due to recent weather. Ground is soft mushy mud with ruts that will get fixed as soon as possible. The digger needs to finish off by leveling and tamping down the dirt on the plots. And Parks update by Bart, repainted, he's been repainting the equipment. They will be working on firing up the city restrooms by the end of April to avoid frozen pipes due to low night temperatures. At the Mueller Center, things are full speed ahead. We, they survived Prom 2024, are preparing for the upcoming Missoula Children's Theater May 1st. Pre-registration will be second week of April. High school play Snow Queen is April 4th, 5th, and 6th, and they will start mowing the ground soon. Recreation updates for Gabby, working on summer program to have, they're going to have two cycles of swim lessons, three, three weeks each session. We'll, we'll look at offering golf, taekwondo, pickleball girls, softball gymnastics. She's still in the process of trying to get things together for summer rec. With Key Pot Springs Beautiful Updates, all pods were released on the south end of town except Big Bats. Start, they will start planting as weather allows. The bedners have ordered the table with the June arrival date for placement in the pod next to Ace Hardware. That'll be like a checkerboard type thing so people can play out there. Ladies expressed concern over the contractors using the pods as garbage pits for chunks of concrete and iron pieces. I think Bart was talking about they're going to go and kind of clean that up for them so that they can get, you know, the planning and getting, making it look good in there. Bob Jr. will address that with the contractors. Activities planned are in May, it will clean up spring mixer at the Mueller Civic Center and the Earth Day Rummage Sale. They have not moved forward on the Centennial Park Lights in the Trees Project. I think they want to check for hail damage first, is that right, Deb?
I think they were going to check on hail damage and what that could do to possible solar lighting?
Right.
Placed in the trees?
That was meant as a slow joke. In New Business, bringing that up, the seven points of interest. Bob Jr. is working on researching information before an interpretive plaque to be placed at a pullout near the top of the truck bypass. He has sent some pictures out. I think that possibly Linda, I, and Bob will sit down and we'll take a look at those plaques and decide on a couple of them and they'll be brought up at the next meeting so that, possibly you, if you, we want to come down and check it out too, Mayor. We'll all take a look at those plaques and figure out which one we like to put out there. He does have an ideal, what Deb was talking about and what's been put out there with the information that's, it's, it's very vague right now through a lot of information on the Seven Sisters. But I'm thinking how it may turn out, may not turn out is that information with the native tie-in to it so it can be a point of interest and people can, you know, because I think it's important to have that history of Hot Springs, so. And the Rob Mason Memorial Bench Plaque, Chautauqua Park, basically whenever the family is ready, they will wish to have a stone bench placed near the playground with a commemorative plaque. I've talked to Rob. It's just a matter of getting the kids together to decide when they will want to do this project. So it's still out there, it's something we're going to keep on the, on the agenda. Just move forward with it.
Is that what they're going to do instead of a sign or are they still?
They still want to put the plaque up and then they want, Rob wants to put a park bench out there also so that they can sit, his ideals, they can sit, people can sit and watch the kids play, which, you know, yeah, makes sense. In the Community Garden, I haven't heard anything. The annual report is pending. I've talked to a couple of the members and to let Carrie know. So that's getting that time of year again to report to the council what's been going on. Deb, if you've got some way to talk to Carrie, remind her that we, you know, it's getting about that time again, so. And projects from Public Works, thank you, Bill, move to Parks and Rec. Irrigation at the Depot, no information yet. Irrigation across Melinda's Dakota Mark, no information yet. Irrigation along Centennial Park, no information as of yet. The Sons of the American Legion Flag Pole at Centennial Park, Mayor, I believe that pole's been taken down. The pole was punched, what, two years ago into ground for that, but it hasn't been moved over there since. I don't know where, what the status on that. Bob Jr.'s going to look into that also unless you have some information on it when I'm done here. Number five, Jason Gesh, Shrek Volleyball Court Presentation. He gave several options for court sites. The committee thought option B was most viable. The color schemes for signs was discussed. So we're making a recommendation to move to council for a vote. So this might come before y'all, whatever y'all want to do with council. He's got a real good presentation. It addresses a lot of the issues, signage, things along with the insurance that, something that should have been done all along. And that's, so. In the Old Business, the City Parks Address, that list is complete, right, Misty? Y'all got that?
Sorry, I'm not certain.
Oh, the, okay. The Tree Grant, the work will begin April 10th, 2024. You can see him out there, they're already starting to work on the trees, getting the, and pickleball court resurfacing end of April. Also asked about backordered items, that's from Jason Midgley. Butler Park Baseball Field, there's no updates on that. Irregular, irregular, thanks, JR. Irrigating Public Access Area along Fall River, River adjacent to Centennial Park, there's no, been no update as of yet. School Street Park, inclusive playground, nothing finalized. In public comments, Jason Midgley, along with Shrek, are looking at grants for wind screens. Black Hills Energy for switching out to current lights around the tennis, pickleball, basketball court of LED lights with a new system with a timer box to control the lights. Deb brought up the subject about removal of the hemlock in various areas along Fall River. Bart responded with it, with it needs to be sprayed twice a year. I did talk to Bob Jr. He talked about when he was up at Pelfushe, there was a company that first two years they had to spray, the first year was kind of pricey to do it. I'm not speaking for him, but this is what he told me. And then, of course, it has to be sprayed every 10 years, but the way he was talking, their river up there looks really nice because of this particular company that they use to do the spraying every year, so. The meeting adjourned at 3:00 PM, next meeting, May 1st, 2024, 2:00 PM here at the Mueller Civic Center. Everyone is invited.
Any questions for Larry?
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Where, where does that hemlock reside? Is it like up along the banks?
It's down, most of it's right down there by Centennial Park. When you've got, when you've got a little, if you drive by onto your left, you'll see where the, the water comes out, that there's a bunch of it right there also. And it's spread out along, but that's where most of it is right there.
There's a bunch by Brookside and then there's a bunch by Bill's Heating as well.
I'm just wondering, spray and rivers don't usually go together, so.
Yeah, that is, that is a big topic, but the way he was talking, this company.
Put somebody in a Tyvek suit and have him go pull it.
Yeah, you need a hazmat suit to deal with that.
So our underground, our underwater weed eaters who participate and are waiting to put interviews wouldn't work for this?
Bill? All right. Not my area of expertise, sorry.
A number of things, Larry. You were talking about the plaques for the Seven Sisters.
Yes.
I'd asked Historic Preservation to kind of weigh in on it from a historic standpoint, you know, if they could find out any history on it.
Right.
Because that's what's important in all this is depending on who you ask, they, how they got their names differs. So we just need to make sure that we identify, you know, the.
Correct history.
Correct history and how they were named. So if you continue working with Deborah through Historic Preservation, just figure out what needs to go on the plaque and what's accurate. That's, that's an important part of that. The garden. Oh, Carrie and I have been playing telephone tag today.
Oh, have you?
So she may be asking one of the questions that, that you're looking for. We just haven't been able to get in touch with each other today. The Sons of the American Legion Flag Pole, the last I was aware of that flag pole, they hit, the city had taken it down. It's out at the street shop waiting for the Sons of the American Legion to get out there and clean it up and paint it and provide some volunteers from that group to help put it back in. But yes, the city punched the hole for it a couple of years ago, up by the Banshee, the Banshee, if that's the right name for it. All right, thank you. Planning and zoning, Deborah?
Planning and zoning will be meeting this Wednesday, April 17th, 6:00 PM at City Hall.
Seven, isn't it? Didn't we switch to seven?
It says six here.
I thought at your last meeting you talked and switched it, but.
This is what Mary put out.
To quickly change it at daylight savings time.
So it's, it's going to be seven?
I'm sorry to add confusion, but that's what I thought.
Check, check with Scott.
Okay.
But I, I agree with Misty that after the time change, when it gets a little lighter in the evening, they've gone to 7 o'clock.
Okay.
Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Okay, Public Safety met on Thursday, April 4th, 2:00 PM at the Mueller Center Annex. Members present were JR Huddleston, Deborah Johnston, myself, Mayor Nelson, Chief Norton, Captain Shively, Fall River County Assistant Emergency Manager Gary Baker, and Fall River Health Services Compliance Manager Renee Staley. Members of the public were Sony Cochran, Jeffrey LaRive, Jerry Huddleston, Jane Lukens, and Ryan Engel. The agenda was adopted as published. Under Communications from the Public, Jeffrey LaRive had concern over traffic rerouting through the Evans Heights area and the 25 mile an hour speed limit on Summit Road. Sony Cochran had concern over the traffic speed in the Harney Road and Happy Hollow Street area and asked if there was a possibility for a flag near that intersection. Ryan Engel reminded the committee that the crosswalk sign at 16th and University at the car wash had been knocked down and needs to be replaced, and also that cars parked at 19th and Jennings in the school zone. The committee had previously determined to reduce the speed limit on Summit Road and the adjoining roads in that area and will follow up with the city administrator with the status of request, of that request, as well as the possibility of additional warning signee at Harney and Happy Hollow and the installation of the crosswalk sign at 16th and University. Chief Norton will follow up on the concern with the parking issue at 19th and Jennings. Update from the Police Department. The Police Department performed an emphasized saturation patrol on April 3rd from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. 22 stops with emphasis on speed and seatbelt compliance was the focus. These saturation patrols will continue as the overtime is supported by a highway safety grant. As of March, as of the March Expense Report, the PD had expended 22.81% of its budget through 25% of the year. In March, officers responded to 308 calls, 39 of which were considered potentially high-risk calls. Of the 1,091 calls through March, 18.15% of those calls are considered potentially high-risk. Under Old Business, the status of the seven items on the action item list were reviewed. The Fall River Emergency Management continues to plan the NIMS training for elected officials. This training should take place sometime in July or August and will be face-to-face training. The Traffic Control Sign Study is progressing and should be completed by the end of this quarter. The Second Survey of the House Number Project is being coordinated with the Boy Scouts. There was no update available for the fuels reduction grant or the backup power grant or the animal control issues. The Family Day Care Compliance Plan, currently no daycare facilities have renewed their licenses and an action plan is being developed. Under New Business, a citizen request for a speed indicator sign on University Avenue within the school zone was made. Chief Norton will investigate the feasibility of this request. The next meeting will be held at the Library Conference Room as there will be an Emergency Coordination Center Training held for council members and the Public Safety Committee members at 3:00 PM after the Public Safety Committee meeting. We adjourned at 3:07 PM and as I stated, the next meeting is May, Thursday, May 2nd, 2:00 PM at the Library Conference Room.
JR?
Just an update, stop sign at 16th, the Jennings is there, so that's been taken care of.
The crosswalk sign?
The stop sign, not the crosswalks. There are identified spots at the school area that do need crosswalk signs and I can meet with whomever. There are three different areas that there is no identification that that's a crosswalk coming up, so we, we need to look at those. But there was a, there was an issue with a stop sign being down at 16th.
Okay.
And it's up, but there is no crosswalk sign at that particular one, no. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of questions. The emphasized saturation control, you gave a date and I missed it.
That was April 3rd.
Thank you. And then the overtime reimbursed by the Highway Safety Grant, did you find any more information about that? Council hasn't approved a grant, we've never gotten any grant.
I've sent an email to the chief today to, asked him to please contact you.
I'd love to help get us reimbursed for that overtime.
Yeah.
Then I had a question on the daycare renewal, is that an annual thing?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
For our ordinance, it is an annual.
That was a new ordinance, so a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Bill, was there any discussion on any recipients of the Homeland Security Grant in the city?
We did not get the grants that we had applied for.
Okay, so I don't feel so bad now. The school didn't get anything either.
Ross did say how much there was available and how much had been put in for, and the two amounts were significant. There was a lot more put in for than what was available.
Any other questions?
Bill, also on that daycare thing, did you ever get a chance to talk to Alex Nelson? We had talked about this when the first start of the communities that care, what they're thinking, I don't remember the name of that mayor. thinking after what is I don't remember the name of that mayor. But what they're doing is something with daycare for the hospital, I believe, my second-hand information. And when he was asking about things like that, I referred him to you and said that we have things on daycare. So.
I don't think he ever contacted me and I didn't contact him.
All right. That might be something you might want to look into if you've got the time. What they got planned is pretty decent.
Yeah, I'm not sure if a facility like that doesn't fall within the scope of the family daycare ordinance.
Because that's used for men on review. It's an addition to that process. And it would be in a home. So I agree.
Yeah, this is actually a zoning issue that we were able to expand on.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Public Works, Bill, Hal?
Okay, Public Works will meet Tuesday, April 30, 1:00 PM at the Mueller Center Conference Room.
Thank you. Southern Hills Golf Course, that's me. They met on April 8. Members present were Collett Miller, Dave Merrill, Kathy Volmer, city employees, Jason Happy, Jill Low, and I was present. Jason talked about his ongoing course repairs, priority during the spring. Spring cleanup is being done as fast as they can. Aeration dates for the course for July 22, 23. The rest of the course they're taking care of are the appearance of the turf, needles, pine cones, irrigation system startup, preventing maintenance. They're prepping for the retaining wall after the contractor is done with his portion of it. Jill talked about the reported rounds to date. She's also working on communications platform with our current clubhouse pro shop software to get text messaging and announcements out to more golfers for marketing purposes. Committee talked about the role of the advisory committee. That committee's turned over a number of people over the last couple of years. Misty had provided a document that the city uses for the roles of all of the different committees, what their responsibilities are. So they reviewed that. The retaining wall is going well. The wall itself is pretty much complete. They've got the top rows on it. They'll start putting topsoil in so Jason's crew can get the landscaping done there. They're starting to work on the patio around the clubhouse, around the northwest corner of it, and getting the northwest corner of the roof stabilized. So they're working on that. Also talked about the concessionaire. JR talked about the admin finance opinion on a concessionaire. Don't have the official response from the golf course advisory because all the members weren't there. But the members that were present, which are the majority of the members of the clubhouse of the golf course advisory committee, are not in favor of a concessionaire. So I expect that's what will come back. That's what I'm advocating for for a number of reasons. Concessionaire out there would certainly take up more space than what's available in the clubhouse itself. Between what they're looking for as far as expanded food offerings and still having enough space for a pro shop. We're waiting. Jason is waiting to get the course rerated by the South Dakota Golf Association. The South Dakota Golf Association is several years behind, so that's taken a little bit. There was also a request to Jason from a Abbott Golf Course member to use the golf carts during the off season, during winter, when the course is closed. Had some ideas of generating extra revenue by charging folks to go ahead and allow their carts to be out on the course. The golf course committee is adamant that the additional damage that would be incurred to the course itself, the revenue that would be generated from having the carts out there would in no way offset the damage to the course. So it's typically closed from December to February, and the golf course committee is still advocating to not open it up for carts, even if people are willing to pay for those during December and February. So that one's dead in the water. Next meeting will be the second meeting, or second Monday in May at the golf course at 6:00.
Mayor, when the retaining wall is done, is that when we'll save the expense for the new HVACs that we discussed in 20 late 2023?
Yes. Jason's working with Bill's Heating and Air Conditioning to figure out when they're going to be delivered and hooked up. Any other questions? All right. So we're on to the city administrator report. This is from Bob. He's currently working on a nuisance violation warning letters with the city hired contractor and the development coordinator. That city hired contractor is one that council approved, the additional 5,000. That's Joel Johnson. In addition, there are code enforcement items which are higher priority than others, and those are being addressed first. This is going to be a daunting task. We will make progress as we move into the summer season. Code enforcement is clearly important to the community and is a point of emphasis. These are items that he's working on. Dehydration of the sandstone at City Hall, grants and application contractor quotes. He had talked a little bit about that. There's some devices or a device that can be purchased that will dehumidify and take all of the moisture out of the sandstone that's.
Correct.
At City Hall so that it stops deteriorating. He's gotten one grant, got approved for a grant for 7,500, and he's waiting on notification for the second grant for 7,500. Masonry masonry repairs on the back of City Hall and the flood wall along North River. Quotes have been obtained and grants have been applied for. The repair of the steps at Chautauqua Park are awaiting quotes. Drainage design of Valley View Engineering quotes have been obtained. That's Valley View Street on the south end of town. Drainage up there is awful bad, and the city engineer is also looking at getting the design for curb and gutter, storm sewer, and to pave the highways. So he's reached out for those quotes. Flood inundation study of Fall River and the city of Hot Springs. This is a Silver Jackets program through FEMA. They were in town a couple of weeks ago. They also met with Frank Maynard with Fall River Emergency Management. They took a look at the the river from Colebrook through town. Parking layout of River Street from Jennings to Albany. That's the section that was paved. Gosh, it was about three years ago. John Gregory was with us when that was paved, getting that marked. Golf course retaining wall, we talked about that. He's been working on with the Department of Homeland Security grant applications for a generator for backup power at the wastewater treatment facility and a grant application for fire mitigation. Interpretive site on truck bypass, we talked about that. Completing the roof at the Mueller Center. This has been a trying project. As of today, there will be a complete roof inspection done this week, and a punch list has been provided to the metal roof contractor. Repairs are still needed at the library and the clubhouse, as well as gutter replacement at the library. All of that is still in work. Playground planning has begun at School Street Park. Grants will be applied for this project. A grass volleyball court plan planning has begun for Butler Park, and a site has been selected, and that's been kicked around through parks, I believe. Working with Parks Department to get their turf areas cleaned up and grass growing. The tree grant, Larry talked about that. The contractors began today in Centennial Park. So that's what our city administrator is working on.
I've got two things for you, Mayor, on that. On the brain cramp. Joel Johnson, the guy we hired.
Code ordinances.
The ordinance. I don't know if anybody else knows this, if you've talked to Bob Jr. Bob Jr. said he has worked with him in the past, and he speaks very highly of him. So I just wanted to bring that information forward.
Many communities do.
Right, yeah. And he's he's, yeah, he's pretty much satisfied, very happy that we've got that person. So I can't remember the other one you were talking about there. The I guess I won't talk about it. One of the last two things you were talking there about.
Last two?
The School Street Park and what was the other one?
Volleyball court?
Volleyball court.
Yeah.
The volleyball court. I know that I talked about, we talked about in her in the notes here. Linda put the notes together, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Linda. I talked to, now I know that we as a as a committee, we don't have any sovereign rights to vote. But talking to, in reference to what you're saying, talking to Bob Jr. about that, the committee made that recommendation for it to come to council, but nobody seemed to have a problem with the project going ahead. So that's probably what he's referring to right there.
Okay.
Because of the way that the the information was put together was very well laid out. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions I might be able to answer from the city administrators' report? All right. Misty, Finance Officer report?
I have nothing to report at this time.
So what I have for you folks tonight is more public notice than a council notice. For 2024, there won't be city elections for mayor, wards one, two, and three. The incumbents are running unopposed. That leaves one vacant ward four council position. The council expression of interest form for the ward four vacancy can be picked up at City Hall or downloaded from the city's website and Facebook pages. If you live in Ward Four and you're interested in being considered for the vacant seat, please bring your expression of interest form to City Hall or email it to the city finance officer by June 12, 2024, at 5:00 PM. Your expression of interest can then be included in the June 17 council packet for their review. If expressions of interest are received, there will be an item on the July 1 council agenda to appoint someone to fill a one-year term for Ward Four. It's important that all four wards have equal representation. So if you live in Ward Four and are interested in participating in city government, submit your expression of interest form before the June 12, 2024, 5:00 PM deadline. And we'll mention this a couple more times so the public's aware of it. And between Misty and Brett, if we could get a notice in the paper?
Can we make the deadline 4:00 PM since that's when we close our doors? Or do you want emails or?
Good point. So your expression of interest can then be included. Bring your expression of interest form to City Hall or email to the city finance officer by June 12, 2024, at 4:00 PM. So again, the the deadline for anyone that would be interested in being considered for the Ward Four position will be June 12, 2024, 4:00 PM. Any questions for me? All right. With that, can I get a motion to go into executive order?
Oh, no, no. So I was gonna, I could go to the end. I was just gonna ask Deb if how if she had a report on that Board of Equalization meeting.
That's coming up.
Oh, it hasn't happened yet.
18th and 19th.
Okay. Will you will you provide one? When you?
I can.
I'd be interested to hear your take. Sorry, Mayor.
That's fine. All right. Any other questions? All right. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion. We go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law 1-25-23 legal.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. There won't be any action after the meeting, after executive session. There will be a pause before executive session. For those that are waiting on rides home, not sure how long it'll take. I don't think it's going to be much past 10:30, 11: I don't think we'll be long. Okay, it looks like we're all back at 9:00. I think we left executive session about 8:58 maybe. I don't know what time you had, Misty. Okay. All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. Take your pick, Misty.
Bill made the motion, had a second by JR. Okay, all right. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Have a good evening.